Good morning and welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting of November 8th, 2022. I'll stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the agenda review?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today. I'll move the agenda.
Second. Move second by Vance. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Okay, the first thing we have is Public Works and Ryan.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Ryan.
It's nice to be first on the agenda after changing in and out.
Well, thank you for the road tour the other day, Ryan. It was very nice to see all the projects that you guys got done last year and safely and very well done. Appreciate the time you take to take us around for that.
Thank you.
All the road tours are good, but somehow this one, maybe it's because of like Highway 1 and stuff.
See that final. After years and years.
That's opened on Friday?
You're beating me to the punch, but yep. We're at heck or high water. We're planning on trying to get that open by this Friday.
All right.
All right, so the first action item we have is consideration of final payment, which is payment number 15 for state aid project 007627014. This is for CASA 27 from drunk highway 14 to county stated highway two by Mathew's Construction Company. The original contract amount was $6,071,691.22. Final payment amount is $91,548.48 for a total final contract amount of $6,158,082.16. I would recommend approval of that final payment to Mathew's Construction Company.
Move to approve. Move by Vance.
I'll second.
Second by Julianne. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, action item number two is consideration of change order number 20 for state aid project 007601018. This is county stated highway one from 9 to 90. During the course of construction, it was determined that additional quantity of the soil nail walls were required to extend some of the walls that were designed. In addition to that, we had to build two more small soil nail walls above the other walls to adequately retain the existing slope. As you know, that back slope is fairly trepidous and it's really difficult to get good some topography on it because it's somewhat changing over time as the slopes continue to erode. So as we got into the field, it was determined that significant additional quantity was necessary. This is all at the existing contract price, so the contractor is not charging us more. They're charging us what they bid to do the work. It's just an extension of that quantity and adding two new walls. So because we have a significant overrun of that quantity and the walls are fairly expensive, you will see in the change order document that was provided, the parentheses are backing out quantities and costs of the original contract quantity. And the reason we have to do this is because the original contract quantities were a planned quantity, meaning that it's kind of a set in stone quantity. And if you change a planned quantity, it has to go through a change order process. So you'll see backing up planned quantities and including the new quantities for the project work. The total change order amount is $1,241,893.4. As we discussed previously, this project construction is being 100% funded by MINDOT State Aid Turnback Funds. So this will not be a county funded project. I have spoken with the manager of the turnback account, informed him of this overrun. I didn't get any significant concern. He felt that their funding were inadequate sources too and covered this project.
All right.
Would recommend approval.
Motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
And second by Kevin. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Thank you. Action item number three is consideration of the BAR Engineering Scope and Agreement for the Rappin' in dam Federal Energy Regulatory Commission Reporting Requirements. I asked BAR Engineering to assist us with the relatively short deadline that was imposed on us by the FERC for some middle of several dam safety and monitoring documents. These are things that are out of our technical expertise and given the short timeframe, they're going to be fairly challenging to meet. So BAR obliged us with the proposal as presented to provide us with its, sorry, the documents here, potential failure mode analysis report per part 12D report, the dam surveillance and safety monitoring plan, a dam field inspection, and then supporting technical documents, owner's dam safety plan, public safety plan. The one item that they were going to have to negotiate and find a path is the dam safety assessment that the FERC had requested. I don't feel that I have the technical expertise to certify the dam safety. And given the short timeframe and the lack of the fact that BAR was not the ones to do the full evaluation, they didn't feel that it was within their professional obligation or ability to certify the dam. So they had recommended that we request an extension from the FERC on that item. So that makes sense to me, given if you're going to certify that a structure like this is safe, you want to go through the adequate analysis yourself. BAR provided a range of prices because depending on the FERC responses and the input effort required, it's a variable cost. So they provided a baseline cost of likely the minimum would be $32,000 and up to $55,000. That approach makes sense to me. I'm comfortable with it. So with that being said, I would recommend approval of the professional services agreement to BAR Engineering.
So move and move by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Vance. Dollars for. Okay.
I don't have a question, Mr. Chair, but just a comment. And I just think this is good business sense. I mean, you guys don't have the horsepower to get this done inside your organization. I know you probably have the expertise if you looked hard enough, but I think just by reaching out to someone else and having this done through that source, I think just makes a lot of sense.
This is at the deadline then, is that the 30th or something?
Correct.
All right, anybody any further? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Okay, move into a few project updates. Obviously, we're getting close and CASA 1 will be opened by this Friday as the objective. Crews are working on completing project turf establishment, remaining punchless items. And if we get the rain that's forecasted over the next few days, they may have to go out, work under traffic to wrap up a little bit that's remaining, but I know Mathew's is ready to get out of there, get the projects reopened in traffic. Wrap that one up. CASA 16 from La Sura River to CASA 90. The plans are at a point where we're comfortable and staff have been meeting with landowners to begin acquiring right of way. So Jack's on the trail for right of way acquisitions on that project for 2023 construction. We will hold the plans and middles until mid winter pending that right of way acquisition processes. These commissioners know right of way acquisition can tend to be a progress controlling operation for getting these projects out the door because we have to meet with and negotiate with all of those landowners along these projects. So ones like county stated highway 13 or 11 last year can be very challenging when you have that many landowners to meet with or if you have any level of significant impacts. We will be working through that process this winter. We've got a lot of right of way to buy for several projects. But we're fortunate that Ryan Glenn is also able to help Jack out as he's learning that role in addition to his existing duties. CASA 13, we anticipate receiving the 95% plans from SRF within a month. Once those plans are received, we'll also begin right of way acquisitions for that project. SRF will continue working on project environmental permitting over the course of the winter. 26 from 57 to 22, Minnesota Highway 22 in 2023. We're expecting 90% plans for review from Bolton and May relatively soon. Once those plans are received and reviewed, we'll begin right of way acquisition meetings on that project, primarily going to be temporary easements needed. There are a few areas we'll buy existing easement convert to fee title and one property where we will need new a fee title in agricultural field adjacent to the Wicker Champ Health Campus or the trail. So those projects are moving along fairly well again. Right of way will be our critical path. The box culvert replacements, we've talked about these projects in the past and just wanted to refresh the board's memory. We have four box culvert designs effectively sitting on a shelf design. These are not eligible for state bridge bonding funds because they're less than 10 feet wide, but we have two of them on county stated highway two, one on county road 174, one on county road 177. Box culverts have become increasingly difficult to obtain. Reinforced concrete pipe in general has become a major industry challenge in getting pipe, getting manholes. Box culverts especially this year, if you hadn't ordered them by like March or April, there was a high likelihood you wouldn't even get the box culvert. So we're looking at potentially ordering the box culvert for CASA 13 in advance so that we can ensure that we have it. Those are sitting on the side. We're going to see how all of our other bids come in and then hopefully tackle a handful of those next year with our CASA money. But knowing that we've got some reductions in some other projects that are, you know, CASA 13 is a very large project. If we don't get bridge bonding funds for that, it's going to be, stretch us financially to complete or at least make sure that we have the funds to obligate. We also have bridge projects in design. Once the plans approved, those will go on to the state bridge replacement funding list where when local bridge replacement program funds become available. Those bridges are on CASA 4, CASA 10, CASA 29, and county road 146. They're in various states of design, all with Erickson Engineering at this point in time. CASA 11 from the West County line to CASA 6 is a 2024 project. Our staff will begin designing that this winter, so that'll be the project that our staff will take on. And then additionally, we have CASA 82 Victory Drive from Hoffman Road to Fair Street planned for 2024. We'll be looking to seek requests for proposals for professional services design over the course of this winter to get that project rolling as well. Our maintenance crews have stayed busy finishing up gravel shouldering, wrapping up turf establishment on back slope and shaving projects. They are also re-roofing and reciting the St. Clair Cold Storage Building, doing that ourselves. They replaced the concrete aprons at the Mapleton and Vernon Center shops, the deteriorated pavement and aprons that were there, replacing field approaches and driveways, wrapping that up before things freeze up. And crews are also preparing for ice and snow control operations. So that concludes my informational items on projects. If there's any questions on that maybe before we move on.
Any questions, Ryan?
Nope.
The next item I have for discussion is a memorandum that was prepared, that I prepared for the board regarding a reduction that was just recently brought to our attention during the Minnesota County Engineers Association Screening Board meetings. It was determined and reestimated by MINDOT that our county stated highway funding, which is fairly significant, was almost $11 million in 2022, will be reduced by an estimated 7%. That's a significant impact to our overall operations. The primary reason for this, according to state aid, was because of reduced vehicle registration fees. When you think about the inavailability of vehicles to purchase, especially new vehicles that are the primary driving and then highest cost for registration fees, I guess it makes sense unfortunately that that revenue would be down. And as you know, the highway user tax distribution fund, the two workhorses in it are the gas tax and the vehicle registration fees. With that being said, the Public Works Department, it was projected we were going to get a small increase. We just used our 2022 projection and dedicated revenue in our budgeting for 2023 to play it safe. Unfortunately, it wasn't safe enough with this now revised estimate. So I provided a table in this memorandum that notes the 2022 distribution amounts, the 2023 estimated distribution amounts, and the difference. In our construction program, we're anticipating a reduction of $478,227. And our maintenance program from our county stated highway funds, $318,818. In our construction program, we're very fortunate that our local option sales tax is performing very strong. In addition to exceeding our budget expectations, we also have some additional revenues in the fund balance for the local option sales tax that I intend to utilize to deliver the projects that we have programmed. So we shouldn't have to cut back on any projects. If we do, it would likely come out of our vituuminous overlay program and potentially our bridge funding. I reserve bridge money for these box culverts and other things of this nature. So that would likely be what would be reduced so that we could deliver the projects that we're working on development of right now. If we look at the second page of the memorandum, the maintenance operations are much more challenging. So I worked with staff to try to put together a different menu of sorts of items that we would consider cutting from our budget if the board decides that the $319,000 is to all come from the budget and should be cut. So with that being said, we proposed in staff ordering of preference of how to pursue that reduction to delay the Bray Park Trail repairs. The existing trail pavement is very poor condition. I really question if replacing it's even a good idea. The intention is to just pulverize it in place and turn it into a gravel trail. That's the trail that goes through the wooded area in the back, primarily used by a few of the campers, but a lot of the locals out there. Those paved trails like that out in the middle of woods are difficult to maintain. It's very poorly drained. So I think a rustic trail suffice the needs out there.
I think it makes sense to have a rustic trail up there.
That could wait another year or two. The delay, the Red Jacket Valley Park Picnic Shelter, this was part of the long-term vision for the park, but it's not an immediate need. We had kind of developed the area for it, knowing in the future we would anticipate that that would be needed. But it's not something that we're replacing that's an existing facility. So we thought by pushing that off as a future item, it would be acceptable since there's nothing out there now. And then we start getting into a little bit more challenging items. Delaying the tractor loader with forks purchased by one year. That was a $50,000 estimate. That's a very old Ford tractor. I think most of you have seen it. This was one of our last remaining deferred equipment pieces that was set for replacement when we started that initiative in 2016. Then we get into items that really start to impact our overall operation. We could reduce the gravel crushing from 40,000 to 35,000 tons. That would save us about $34,000. That would reduce the number of gravel road miles resurfaced by approximately 10 miles. That's a short-term solution and it's not sustainable in the long term if funding continues to fall short of previous amounts. We can reduce, in parallel with that, reduce the gravel hauling contract from 850,000 to 750,000 ton miles. That would save about $30,000. That would again, parallel that elimination of about 10 miles of gravel road resurfacing. We could delay the rubber tire roller purchase by one year. That would save $70,000. That's something that would just push that cost into a future year. From a capital standpoint, this year is one of our lowest capital budgets in comparison to future years, where we have other facilities and larger purchases included. So that would only drive up the future cost. We could delay the fuel pump replacement by one year at one of the outshops. That's about $20,000. Again, just pushes it into a subsequent year and kind of hoping it doesn't break in between or we don't have problems. We could reduce the seal coating mileage from 40 to 45, which would reduce the asphalt emulsion contract by about $60,000. That would reduce the total miles covered and that would extend the duration between seal coating, which is believed and proven to be detrimental to the overall pavement life if that's a continual practice. So as we know, seal coats retard the oxidation of the vituumin in the roads, which keeps the AC flexible and stops it from microcracking and degrading. Another one that would, we believe we could get by with would be to reduce the metal culvert purchases by $30,000. We have a reasonable inventory of culverts and should be able to get by with reduced purchases for 2020 through '03 relying on some of the inventory that we have at hand. And then get into smaller savings of $5,000, reducing herbicide purchases and cutting back on our noxious weed treatment. That's a little bit of a hot topic at times when the season's bad on those. At last, that we'd really like to avoid is delaying the bifold mower purchase. That's an important piece of equipment. It would just again, push that cost into subsequent year. So I guess with respect to the magnitude of this and knowing that the budget is somewhat set, I wanted to talk with the board and obtain direction on how they'd like our department to personally.
So what was the projection for the sales tax? Do we have one?
The sales tax would be used to offset the construction amount. So really, the question I have for the board is the maintenance dollars because we can't use sales tax for maintenance work. It's for construction. So it would be $318,818, $319,000, $320,000.
Mr. Chair, I get a little concerned when we start pushing off the projects, the seal coatings, the mowing, the pesticide, the herbicides, because if we get, we're behind on them already and we get more behind on them. The equipment, I'm not that worried about. It breaks down. We have to just figure out a way to buy it new during the year if we have to. It's just not the best planning in the world, but chances are these pieces of equipment will probably make it through that. But I do get a little, and the other amenities, unfortunately, the stuff at the parks. But my biggest concern is the gravel crushing and the maintenance stuff. We just get too far behind on that. So just a thought to start some discussion.
Absolutely.
Equipment, I'm not that worried about. If it breaks during the year, we'll have to deal with it.
Those maintenance reductions are short-term only solutions. They're not sustainable if we want to continue to maintain our system in the good state that we have.
So Bob, you have some thoughts or?
Well, I think this is one of the challenges where we have struggled with the state legislature to provide adequate funding to maintain our roads. And obviously, when you see a dip in some of those revenues that support transportation, it creates this dilemma. You know, we have limited resources based on the levies that have been established and the revenues that are coming in to support the effort. So I would agree, falling behind on those maintenance activities will show up in longer term, higher costs. So those would probably be the things to avoid if you can. The equipment, we've been fighting a battle of recovering from deferred purchases on some equipment. So it's a hard choice to again, say, well, let's kick that can down the road. But I think we are faced with, we have to do something at this point in time, and those are probably the low hanging fruit.
Well, and the equipment is going to go up in price next year. So you risk it not making it through the year. But then if you're scrambling to order or get it to replace it, your costs could go up there too. And the cost will go up for next year also, so.
If we delayed, just kind of quickly running through the numbers, the Bray Park, the trail, the Red Jacket Shelter, tractor loader, the rubber tire roller, fuel pumps, culverts, herbicide and bifold mower, that would be about $300,000, which would put us fairly close to even on that.
I know $5,000 ain't very much for the herbicide for that because we get, I get quite a few calls about weeds getting sprayed and noxious weeds in the spring. So I'm, and again, that's just one of those things. If we don't deal with it this year, we're just going to have to do twice as much work next year. So and for five grand, I think it's probably worth just keeping that in the plan. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Chair, I guess I would support delaying the capital purchases of that $165,000 and then parks as well for another 100 and culverts if we're good to that and kind of look at that $295,000 of savings by delaying those expenses.
I can live with that.
I'd like to have some more discussion about the equipment though. We don't have to do it today. We give you some direction today, but you know, maybe a little more information on how old the stuff is and what your thoughts are. Again, I struggle with that. Is there a way we can move some money around and keep them on the plan? But we don't have to deal with that today. I'd just be willing to hear some more discussion about it, not committing to anything at this point.
I will tell the board that the Public Works budget has been a challenge to balance the last few years. And so, you know, there's not a ton of room in that budget to absorb it. It would, we would have to go to fund balance and that becomes risky when we're talking about some of these ongoing maintenance needs. But you know, certainly we have reserves that could be looked at to a greater degree than we already have.
Yeah, and I'm thinking more of a, not alone, but you know, we're going to give it to you this year and chances are money isn't going to go up next year from the state neither. So you're going to have to even prepare for more.
It's hard to say and obviously, we've been socked pretty hard with inflation costs of our construction materials and equipment. It's been especially challenging, which is why we find ourselves struggling to meet our limits.
So is that helpful?
Yep, I got direction. So I believe is there was consensus to cut the capital. So I believe is there's consensus to cut the capital, the parks and the culverts for that 295,000.
Well, the culverts, is that just something you stock?
We stock culverts. We sell them, so we get revenue back in, which is accounted for in our budget. We have a little bit more budget left this year, so we would expend that, buy more culverts, and just have greater inventory. One of the things we talked about, too, is if and when we get to a new facility, the less culverts we have on hand, they have to move in the future, the better, too. So we're not quite there of having to worry about that yet, but we could get by with less in than 20.
Yeah, because it's just, you can buy them if you need them. Again, you're back to the, if you need one today and you can't get it for six months, that's problematic.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right. And the last item I have in the board packet is the Rapidan Dam memorandum, November 3, Briefly go through that, and please jump in on questions as we move through it. On October 13, 2022, I received an email from Homeland Security Emergency Management providing the FEMA assistance, public assistance program and policy guide. That guide represents guidelines for requesting an alternative project to the one that was previously awarded. FEMA caps the amount of the public assistance funding based on the estimated amount to restore the damaged facility to its pre-disaster design. If we overrun those costs, that's on us. They will not provide additional funds. FEMA PA recipients can elect to use those funds for different options that were outlined. The third one is the one of interest. It's an alternative procedures pilot program for permanent work repairs. Essentially, if we, the applicant, determine that the public welfare is not best served by restoring the damaged facility per our application, then under this program, we may be able to use those funds for an improved or alternate project that must be approved purposes. FEMA and the county would have to reach an agreement on the use of those funds. The amount would still remain capped. And these funds may not be used to meet the local cost share for other federal projects. As we discussed in the past, could these be used for a core project? The answer is really no. However, where I was going with this is, depending on the outcome of subsequent conversations we have today and direction on repairing the gates, perhaps that would be one of the items we would want to revise our application and our scope of work to include gate repairs if that is forced upon us. So that's where I'm kind of trying to head with this, to keep that funding viable if we are pushed into having to repair the gates. Item number two, on October 20, a virtual meeting was held between representatives from the county and the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission to further discuss licensure exemptions, surrender options. I know myself and our staff were on that call, and if we bob in, I don't recall if Josh was on that call or not, but they were also able to sit in on that conversation. We provided an overview of what's led us to this point in the history of the dam. And one of the surprising things that the FERC representatives informed the county is that this is not unique whatsoever to Blue Earth County. There are many, many other agencies that are also surrendering licensure across the nation. So I found that fairly telling, I think, as to the state of hydro as a whole and the commodity values and costs of infrastructure, you name it, aging infrastructure, that it's not just us that's contemplating this. There's agencies all over the nation that are going through this same process. The licensure surrender process is administered by the Division of Hydropower and Compliance, DHAQ, and the regional office in Chicago. Blue Earth County would need to prepare a draft surrender application and propose what to do with the project facilities, which in our circumstance would be leave the gates open, run of river, leaving the dam stand for the time being. The process requires an evaluation of the environmental effects resulting from the proposed conditions. That's a NEPA process that can be done by the FERC or a qualified consultant on behalf of the license holder. FERC staff will determine the environmental assessment and documentation standards for NEPA. Regulatory agencies are involved for comment. A draft is presented to resource agencies, including the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and the Minnesota State Historic Preservation Office. After those agencies provide comments, the FERC updates the application, responding to the comments, fills additional needs, and then files the final application. And then there's a 30-day public notice period. FERC can, the public can comment and appeal that decision. FERC can issue an order on surrender for ending licensure or enforcing continuation. It's not final until the requirements are met. If the county presents a draft surrender request, it doesn't reduce requirements for the completion of safety documents and routine monitoring duties, which is why you saw the BAR engineering proposal. The FERC recommended that the county consider a consultant firm with expertise in licensure surrender to assist with the document development and process guidance. Timeline can be six months to one year. In that conversation, I questioned the necessity of immediate gate repairs if they were to begin the licensure, if we were to begin the licensure surrender process. I didn't get a clear answer, as you would suspect. The FERC replied that it would discuss this with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources if it's truly safe to hand the dam over to the state in that condition with the gates being compromised. It would need to be decided. That would be a surrender application discussion item. Subsequently, the FERC provided a U.S. Army Corps Engineers Loan Program. This Army Corps of Engineers Water Infrastructure Financing Program, CWIFP, is a federal loan program that provides low-cost, long-term loans for maintaining, upgrading, and repairing dams for any non-federal borrower. Total cost of $20 million or more. There's other guidance in the loan program. I didn't know that I saw it being immediately relevant, but I wanted to make you aware that it's available. I didn't want to spend too much time on it, though. I can provide more information upon request. Item number four, staff, primarily myself, have begun investigating potential consultant firms to assist the county with the FERC licensure surrender process. I can provide additional information regarding those firms' availability and cost for services to be obtained if the county board is in agreement to proceed with consideration of entering into a professional services agreement for FERC licensure surrender, so we could enter into an RFP process. I don't know that I'm comfortable with that. I think I'd be more in line of having a conversation with a short list of firms. I have about four right now, four or five written down, and determine their ability to help us, knowing that we've obviously been working with BAR. They have folks that have that expertise and they have the knowledge of the dam already, because there's going to be a learning curve for anybody new to them and hasn't worked on Rapidan before to learn everything that's going on with Rapidan. So, but we could evaluate that and ask for proposals for those services if the board is in agreement with that approach. And then the rest were really just carryover items, talking about daily monitoring or weekly monitoring the costs associated with it, the regulatory outreach, and outstanding tasks really haven't changed. In fact, some have been expedited with the recent letter. That concludes my report. If you have to answer any questions or have discussion on the licensure surrender option.
I guess I don't. I went through most of it already, so.
I'm good.
I'm good.
All the way.
All right. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good rest of the day.
You, too.
All right. Well, just keep on going here. County attorneys up? Yes, we have. Oh, excuse me. I put a line through it. I put a line through it before you even got there.
I hate it when that happens. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the report speaks for itself. If you have any questions, please let me know. Just give you a little bit of information. From a technology perspective, I think I've told each of you in the past that for quite a few years, our office was nothing but pens, paper, and people, and now it's people and technology. We were paperless before the court system was paperless. And a couple of things, we probably spent about two years working with the state court system and the BCA. We were one of the pilot projects for juvenile e-petitions, which is now finally up and going. We've been working extensively with IT, who has been performing very well in trying to integrate more from the electronic standpoint, and we're working with human services in a couple of different areas. But we continue to work on the technology, and we will be facing or are facing some of the hurdles with the Mancater Department of Public Safety, with their going to body cameras in the sheriff's office sometime, I believe in early 2023, will be doing so. And so we're going and working through that from a technology perspective. So we found today that we have a 25-megabyte CDs that are Blu-ray, and that's not big enough to put on some of the two videos that we received from the state patrol. So we have to find a different alternative now. But with that said, I just wanted to point that out to you and give you that tidbit of information. And other than that, I don't have anything else, unless anybody has something.
Any other questions?
No, it's just good to hear you're working with IT so close. That's awesome.
That's good. Hearing none, yeah. Thank you, Pat, for your report.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is county board minutes for October 25.
Move to approve. Second by Kevin, second by Vance. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose carries.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
Move the bills.
Vance moves the bills. Your second?
My second.
Julianne, your second? Okay. Any questions? Was it for Bob? No questions today? Oh, darn. I didn't have either, but, all right. And that's, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number five in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Do have one action item for the board's consideration today, and there is a memo on page 75 that spells this out. This is a staff recommendation to make a modification to some language in the Blue Earth County Employee Handbook regarding accrued vacation that exceeds the annual cap. We're recommending a change to the number of years to be eligible to do this conversion of excess vacation time into a healthcare savings plan. Healthcare savings plans are an employer-sponsored program that allows public employees to invest money in a medical savings account. That plan is administered by the Minnesota State Retirement System, and they kind of define how some of that account works. But ultimately, the amounts are deposited into an account, and the employee eligibility requirements must be agreed to between the employer or agreed to by the employer and included in our written policy. Once contributions are approved and established in the personnel policy, employees who meet that eligibility requirement of 10 years must participate as set out in the policy. So we're requesting this change so that our non-union employees have some of the same benefits that are available to some of our groups that are covered by collective bargaining agreements. Some of these changes are in negotiation as we speak with other groups, but we wanted to get this information out now to our non-union employees as they probably have some planning that they need to do if they're in a situation where they have time above our vacation caps.
Any questions?
I'll move approval for that discussion.
Move his approval. Your second, then?
My second.
Second is Julianne. Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, so now when we're converting vacation leave and sick leave payout, the vacation pay would be in excess to what they're holding? Because we pay out vacation pay, correct, upon?
Up to the maximum.
Up to the max, okay.
This is just dealing with those hours that exceed the annual maximum.
So they're getting more of their time, but they just don't get it in cash? They get it in a benefit?
Yes.
Okay. That's the way I thought it worked. Thank you for that.
Let's say if an employee has 375 hours at the end of the year, they could convert 55 hours into this healthcare savings plan. If they have 395 hours, they could only convert the 60 hours, and they would lose.
Lose some.
Yes.
But this isn't, this is over and above what we pay out of the bank.
Yes. The vacation payout is, well, it's limited to what they've earned up to that max. If it's within that year and they've gone over the max, they might get paid out the full amount. I'd have to double-check that detail.
This is a little more of a liability to the county, though, at the end of the day.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Do we have?
We got a motion in a second.
You do already, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose carries.
Thank you. Under informational items, I have a number of items to report to the board today. We have filled a business analyst and application developer position in our IT department. We've also filled a correctional officer position in the jail. We had a change of employment status for a part-time correctional officer increasing to full-time. And we had a resignation of an eligibility specialist in our human services department, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also had resignation of both a full-time correctional officer and a part-time correctional officer in the jail, so we've initiated recruitment to refill those positions. And then we had a resignation of a property environmental resource specialist, too, and we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. That's it for the human resources agenda. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have about those informational items.
Any questions, Bob, on human resources? Okay. Then you just have.
Item number six in the packet is the financial status report for October 31 of this year. You'll see that our total revenues sit at just over $78 million against expenses of just under $97 million. So we do have a pretty substantial deficit at this point as we're waiting for the second half taxes to be accounted for, and those will show up in the November report. Point out that our state and federal revenues are down quite a bit from last year. Some of that is related to the turnback funds that we did receive for County Road 1 in 2021, and so you're seeing the expense show up this year as we finish that project. Otherwise, our interest on investments, obviously, with the market being pretty volatile, you'll see that that number is not where we'd like it to be at this point. But, you know, our total revenues compared to our budget sits at about 74%. When those second-half taxes are received, we should be in a better position relative to what we expected with our budget. On the expense side, things are running a little bit above budget, largely due to the contracts and fees line, where we have a number of road projects, and again, County Road 1, some of those expenses are showing up this year at a little higher rate than was budgeted. But overall, we're on track with our personal services, which is our salary and benefits lines, pretty much on budget there. And we are sitting relatively well compared to our budget as we look at those last two months of the year coming up. On the enterprise fund, which is the Ponderosa landfill, our revenues are exceeding our expenses by about $2.5 million at this point. A lot of that is because we haven't had a new cell constructed or large pieces of equipment this year. So this is a time when we tend to build some fund balance to prepare for those large expenses that will come in future years. The second page includes the cash and investment balances. Towards the bottom, you'll see a line titled Total County Funds. We're sitting at $116 million, a little more than that, compared to last year at $123 million. So we have So we have, at this point, seen a reduction in our fund balance resulting from some of that activity that we just talked about. That's maybe all I have, unless the board has questions on the financial status report.
Board, any questions on status? If we have none, then I guess we can go to...
All right. Item number seven in the packet is the third quarter donations. We'll need the board to accept these donations. You will see that there are a number of monetary cash-type of contributions, most going to the library. The total, let's see, was a little over $4,000 total with, again, most of it going to the library, some to veterans and human services. The second page does list out the in-kind donations, so, again, most of it going to the library in the form of donations for the collection or for the summer learning program. And then the third page includes volunteer time. Again, the library is the largest recipient of volunteer time showing up there, so.
Move to accept.
Second.
Kevin moves as accepted, and Vance, second at it for the donations? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose carries. All right. I guess we're, geez, we're done already.
Very efficient, Mr. Chair.
You're amazing.
They're not going to help you at all, so.
It will.
Well, in that case, then, yeah, I guess we have Commissioner reports, and at this point, let's take Julianne first. Are you ready?
First, yeah, sure. Since our last board meeting, we had the work session and the tour, bus tour, which was very interesting, and God just supports the county that I've not seen before. And I've not had any advisory board meetings, so that's the end of my report.
All right. Let's go to Kevin.
Okay, as mentioned, it was the work session. We also had a JD49 hearing on October 25. I participated in AMC's District Seven meeting in Martin County on the 26th. November 2nd, attended the drainage levy meeting, and on November 4th, I was, attended the CD56 pre-construction meeting on site at Lake Crystal. That ends my report.
Kevin?
Yep. After our last meeting, the work session was already mentioned. I have been working, I had several meetings on my statewide emergency communication board, my legislative meeting, but I'm also sitting in on some of the finance committee meetings. And then yesterday, we had an in-person group trying to work through the 403 statute on the governance of the SECB, which has been very interesting and problematic to say, trying to get that legislation done and passed through. They wanted to get it through for the 23 session, and now, as of yesterday, our deadline's the 16th, and we couldn't get consensus on what we wanted to send up, so we actually pulled it from the agenda for '23 and will be pushing it for '24. So that board is getting to be a lot of work, but very interesting, and it's a lot of fun going and trying to work through this stuff. Just a new, a new realm of information that I'm not used to, so. Road tour was mentioned. We had our drainage levy advisory meeting, Kevin and I and some staff, went through the levies for next year, trying to get all of them in a positive. And then a couple of things going on with some ditch stuff and some road stuff, and that's my report, Mr. Chair.
All right. Let's skip Vance.
Well, again, we mentioned the work session, mentioned the District Seven meeting. On October 28, I had a State Transportation Plans Policy Advisory Committee meeting with MINDOT and AMC. And then November 1 was the County Road Tour, which is really interesting. On November 2, we had our department head meeting. On November 3, I had an NACO transportation committee meeting. And then yesterday, I had a law librarian meeting. That's the end of mine.
Okay. I guess mine, after the work session on October 25, then after judicial hearing, 49. And then October 22, 26, was the AMC district meeting in Fairmont. There's a number of commissioners there. And then October 27, had a partners for housing board meeting, and several days later, but we did pick a new director, take John Thinneman's place, Trish Anderson. She's actually was our, was our finance director at Partners. I think it was a lot of in-house type selections, and I think she'll do a good job, and welcome him on our board with being the director. Then had, yep, the road tour on the 1st of November, and department heads, it was on the 2nd, and I had a MAPLE board meeting on that Thursday night, and that one was interesting in the sense that we went through different things, including like for the stadium, MSU, and if you recall, looking at what they would do to improve the safety and movement, traffic and people, not, everybody getting, having no accidents, and they seemed to like the full intersection, you know, the all-cross intersection. At least, we were just talking, there was not a action, but, yeah, that was the one, I think, that was like $1.8 million, but anyway, that was interesting. And then that, yeah, that concludes my report, so.
Do adjourn.
Vance moves to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Julianne. Hey, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose carries.
Good job, Mr. Chair.